Oh yeah.
I don't like it either.
I like it. It's still good. Okay, welcome to our city council meeting for Wednesday, May fourteenth. Uh, we'll excuse Councilman Henderson, who will be joining us hopefully for the general meeting. But the other three of us are here, which is really weird. Steve. So let's jump right in. Any, we'll do one point one, review of this evening's agenda. I do have a request to move nine four to the front ahead of nine one. Any opposition to that? That Justin can actually get to his son's baseball game, which I support. Be good with that?
Yeah.
So move my four ahead of nine one. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, future agenda items, anything from council?
Um, I know we're coming up close on the honoree for the parade. What do you call that?
The.
The coroner marshal, coroner marshal. Have we got nominees for that?
I'm not sure.
Do you have to discuss that?
I haven't just. But I'll find out and let you know in a shot. We'll toss it up to you guys if you have someone. Or go fill out the form if you know somebody.
Is it too soon to mount a chief?
I'm the guy. Yeah, I'm right up front. I love you. I'm sure you would love that. You have to wave though.
Hey.
I will. With all your fingers.
Okay. One point three, council discussion of future citizen recognition. We did get one kind of request time because there was a request from Jay Francis actually. There was a Harriman team that won this shark tank type of competition.
Oh yeah.
At some event, so he recommended, so I think if you're okay with that, I'd like to bring them in.
Yeah, that's.
I think it'd be fun to have them. He said it's like a two to three minute presentation. I think it'd be fun to have them.
Pitch.
Do you have pitch force?
Be great.
I love it.
Yeah.
We'll see if they can.
They're from Harriman High.
Harriman.
Really awesome.
We have, if the youth council, I know Dustin, they're gonna be on the next agenda maybe.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move ahead then. Two point one, administrative report, oh sorry, April twenty twenty five city status report. Trevor, you're different seed.
Thank you.
I'm having his inner Blake.
So yeah, I'm here to answer any questions to Blake, but I would just pivot defer and you know, give them to Bryce. Uh, in any case, here's uh, month's report. Um, we did add to the new residential units where we're getting a bit better on tracking I A D U's and by a bit better, I mean slightly better than not at all. And so we're, we're, it's a work in progress, um, but we are trying to, to keep an eye on that. Uh, no pun intended with I A D U's. Um, Sandra did grab me before coming in here, just a few on the businesses to let you know uh, that Chubby's is coming soon. Where things are, things are moving forward in a good way.
Sign up. I just drove by and they've got to sign up, take care of the service.
Yeah.
They've, they've had their billing permit issued and sold out, so.
So that one's something to look forward to for sure. And there's gonna be another new restaurant that she uh, is being somewhat uh, elusive about, um, and a reminder to all for tomorrow morning's pickleball ribbon cutting at ten AM. Um, but yeah, Catherine, Blake and Kyle are here to answer any of your other questions, um, in this, if there are.
I think you meant Bryce, not Blake, but it's fine.
Oh, I am Blake. I'm not.
I am.
No, I, I did have a question on the, on the distribution, just because there's no like, um, reference as far as last year. It, are we like, it looks low like in February, but that's trending, right? January, February is not un- unusual.
So very sharp eye, um, we are lower.
Okay.
Um, you are correct in that these tend to be lower months out of the twelve months in a year. But it is something that staff and, uh, maybe you could jump in to help a bit here, but yeah, we are keeping an eye on the situation because of this alarming.
Right. So staff is concerned, not high level concern, but there is a concern there because last month we were flat. This month we were ten percent lower, so uh, city manager Trupeski asked all the departments to create some reduction scenarios. Um, that will be presented at the end of the month to him, so we were, it's on our radar.
I saw that. I, I don't want this to be convoluted on here and messy, but it wouldn't even, it would be kinda nice to have a comparison to go this year where, you know, we're, we're seeing a growth on our taxes or we're not, year over year, you know what I mean?
Would you wanna see that on a percentage basis or like a vol- volume base, like an actual number?
I don't, eh, an actual number is nice because that's what we pay bills off of is actual numbers, but it just be.
Kinda like what you did on the top with the housing permits from the, in the mountains, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Just so that I can understand that.
The change over time.
Exactly what you're saying, cause we got the email from, he could, you know, copied on that just saying that he's asking staff to really make some scenarios in case there has to be some cutbacks, but it'd be nice to just to see the comparison, just so, eh, not, you don't have to go back more than just another year, but just kinda just to see what's happening over the last.
What was the year previous?
Yeah, that way it just kinda helps me understand a little bit that it's growing or it's uh.
Easy to do that, I think, I say this for, as a line, or a, the line was last year's and where the bars, but we wouldn't have a direct number, but it would at least tell you a sense
Or a trendy line, yeah.
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 Perfect. That, that'd be okay.
If you're touching, you're over, you're under.
Yeah.
And I, I would probably just do it for the total, so it doesn't get too busy.
Yeah, just exactly, just a line that nothing, doesn't have to be too crazy, but just something that would just kinda show you the trend.
Yeah, cause this one, this is the flat one. In your financial report, in the consent, there is a sentence, I know, it doesn't, it's not in this month, but I think you put it in there that we're down about ten percent.
Yes.
Uh, in some months, it's pretty obvious to see why they, they've shortened the month and they pulled stuff out. But it was down, the state sales tax was down drastically and appears to be a normal reporting period. I think uh, in conversation with the other city managers, everybody's kinda like.
So they're, we're seeing that across, across the state.
I wonder if that would be a great correlation to like state average, but I mean, I don't know how that would. So we can see the state average drop as well?
Yeah, we get a report of their total sales statewide. It's just such a large number. I'm trying to think how you would show it on, on this, but really, you look at the, the bottom one down there, since seventy plus percent. Like three quarters of what we get comes from the state. When we see a decrease, it's like, it's most likely because we saw it decrease at the state level
State level.
and not that it's a, one of our businesses.
Makes sense.
Well, yeah, cause it looks like our, our point of sales is similar block of blue there.
Yeah, interesting, um, because if you went back, it's, it's changed a bit. Our, our num, our overall numbers changed quite a, a lot like that, but the percentages have still stayed pretty stable. It's, it's kind of a weird. Um, we, we've grown that, cause I think we were maybe at twenty percent. I'm trying to remember. We did this analysis a while back.
Yeah, in twenty fourteen, we were about eighty twenty to state and then direct sales.
Okay.
So that's.
On, on a much lower number.
Yeah.
Much.
And then you come forward, we're seventy-five, twenty-five.
But it's just staying the same, even though it's growing, but, but.
Yeah, so our direct sales are growing as well, but the states has grown, um, we could probably, yeah, play around with
Yeah.
how that chart, so you could at least see the, that sense in that top chart where we're, how we're trending year to year.
Yeah.
So we, we look at that and as you get back further years, uh, our, we had such rapid growth, it's hard to, to get much of a trend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In, in, you go back five or ten years, you don't, the numbers are so small.
Well, it's, I mean, there was a lot of stuff going on five years ago, two versus now, so it's just, yeah, if you, just a last year compares, a line on there, that would be awesome. Just wanting to have more work, sorry.
No, this is great. I, in fact, a lot of the, there are quite a few more charts that have been built out on sales tax in particular. We just haven't found a way to necessarily publish them and kinda keep the confidentiality that we need to go along with that, and so if, if we can, we'll see what we can share within those parameters, but definitely excited about the interestingness. Thank you.
Yeah, it would be awesome, just like, just that exact same thing from last year, only instead of the blue, you could just have a red line that went across there.
It just shows, you can see where it's touching at the top.
Yeah.
Cool.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Or green or whatever color you wanna, you know.
Yeah, we try to avoid red when we're talking about finance versus, green or black are good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, two point two, quarterly capital project report. Bryce.
Okay, so um, we used to send these out as memos, but we wanted to kinda follow the same format as the economic development and, and kind of Trevor's format here for kind of a city dashboard look and a quick summary of what's going on. So this is our, um, well, you'll be seeing this quarter, come to the council quarterly. Um, this is really the first one that we've brought to the council, so uh, similar to, to Trevor, we're looking for input on what you'd like to see. But it's uh, meant to be a summary of all the capital projects going on in the, in the city, and by capital projects, that can be reimbursement agreements we have with developments. That's roadway parks, public works projects, waterline projects, stormwater projects, all of our projects that, um, and it's a collective group of project managers, engineering, parks, same, not water department and public works kinda help oversee all of these projects, so. This is just a, kind of a summary of all of them, um, just meant for your information, but if there's any questions on specific ones, I can try to answer them. I, I will say, I'll put in a plug, one of them, six thousand west, uh, widening phase one has a public open house next Thursday night. Um, here at city hall, so we're, we're bringing, bringing people in. It hasn't been fully designed yet, so we are taking input. That'll kinda kick off the right of way acquisition for the road, so. But yeah, there's a lot of projects on here. A lot of them are in the middle of construction, some of them are in design, some of them are wrapping up, but uh, yeah, can answer any questions or receive any feedback of what you'd like to see in the future for this.
I did have one feedback was just, thank you for the hard work that goes into just getting graphs, looking at all different ways to find money to take, to do these. There's, you know, it's all tax money, but there's different pockets we can tap into rather than our own. It's kinda nice. So good job.
Okay.
Okay.
Easy P E. Appreciate it, Bryce. Lot going on.
Okay. Yeah, it was really detailed and informative. Thank you.
Yeah, I like that, I like that map. Okay, uh, two point three, discussion of pavement preservation program. Justin?
Yep, so we'll have, so Bryce will go through the presentation, but just wanted to kinda touch base on a high level. Um, over the last five, six years, we've made some great strides in improving our program. Um, it, as you'll see, and in the staff report, you also saw, we've made some big improvements also in the pavement condition across the city, so. Um, I think the benefit of having the analysis that we have done every five years has helped us to determine a, a better way to go about preserving our pavement. Um, determining what the PCI is and targeting certain roads. Bryce will talk through that as we go through, but then also, um, the study also provided some different funding options that you'll see later in the slides that we wanna kinda discuss. Um, some approaches moving forward, um, to kinda see, cause we funded, and the council has funded pretty heavily, the asphalt preservation program. And over the last several years, we've seen great improvements. Not saying that we wanna take a huge step back. But what we've done and then moving forward, might be able to scale that back a little bit and not put as much money towards the preservation. Might be able to put it in construction, reconstruction of roads more than the preservation. Um, so we can discuss, look at those options as we get towards the end, but for Bryce, we can go through and.
Yeah. So yeah, we'll just kinda, Justin touched on a lot of this, but we'll talk about kinda where we're at today, or five years ago versus today. Uh, what does that mean? And then moving forward, how are we gonna, gonna handle it? So. Um, this is just kind of a, a graph to show the increase of asphalt we have every year, so this is mostly new subdivisions, but we do have widening projects, new roads. Olympia, for example, is putting down a lot of asphalt that we are going to have to maintain. Um, so that, that's something to keep in mind that even if we're doing great, we're adding to our plate, right? And so we gotta keep that in mind that it's always, we're always looking for better and more efficient ways to preserve our roads so that we can keep up with this trend. Just on, we're averaging over the last five years, about a million square feet every year added to our roads and, and asphalt, so. You can imagine that's, that's, that's a pretty good trend to, to try and keep up with. Um, so total, we're, we're just under thirty-two million square feet of asphalt in the city. Um, so as Justin alluded to, we've hired a, a, a firm that comes in and, and does a pavement evaluation study, so. You may remember about four and a half years ago, we, we reported on that study. They came in two thousand nineteen, but then twenty twenty is when we got the data and, and kinda reported on it. Um, so this is kind of what they do. They drive around, they have two tests, so the first one is this van that has this LiDAR or lasers coming off of cameras that scan the road as they drive. And it maps out the distress of the road, so it'll see if there's cracks or uh, patches or rutting or any kind of distress in the pavement. They map that and then uh, kind of give it a score based on, on that, and that's the pavement condition in, index, the PCI score. Um, so, so that's what we've done in, like I said, two thousand nineteen and then twenty twenty-four, we had them come back. We do on our bigger roads have a little bit more in-depth, so this tells you kinda surface issues. The, the second test is, is a deflection test, so this little trailer, they'll actually stop in the middle of a lane. And uh, they do have traffic, moving traffic control behind them, but then they have a little hammer that hits the pavement. And then it reads the resistance underneath the, the road and, and the rebound. And gives us kind of a structural score for underneath the road, so if there's base problems that we're not seeing yet, hopefully that's telling us we're gonna have issues in the future to look at, so. Um, so yeah, that's what this kinda study, that's how they get the data, is driving a van around and then this truck pulls a trailer around. This is an expensive test, so we don't do it on every road, just our main, major roads, residential roads don't get, don't get that test, so. Um, yeah.
It's crazy, the technology.
Oh yeah, and so here's kind of from the LiDAR, kind of the data that they can take from it and map the, the cracks and then kinda give a calculation on, on what the.
That's cool.
Oh, and, and one other aspect is how rough the road is, so they have a rideability aspect to it as well, that if it's a really rough road, it might be in great shape, like chip seals are, are an example where it, it holds the road very well, but it's a, it's a rougher ride, and so that does impact the overall score if it's a rough ride. Um, so as we mentioned, pavement condition index, the PCI is a, kind of an easier way to understand the, the condition of the road from zero to a hundred. Hundred being a, the most perfect road and zero being completely broken and destroyed road. So, but we're, we're, even a brand new paved road rarely gets a hundred, you're usually in the nineties. Um, and then you almost never see a zero road unless you have some major disaster, right? Water leak or an earthquake or something. But these are kinda the ca- categories that we look at. From eighty-five to a hundred is in that excellent condition, almost like a new road that, that's been paved recently. Seventy to eighty-five is in that very good, and we'll talk about, um, this is kinda where we try to keep the roads, once they're about five years o- ro- old. We wanna keep them in that range before they stop dr- and start dropping off real fast on their life cycle curve. Um, and then yeah, going from very good down to, to good, marginal, fair, poor and very poor, so. And we'll talk about this a little bit, but anything under forty is considered a reconstruct or a, a pretty heavy project to repair to bring it up to where we need to be. And when we talk a little bit later, they'll, they'll talk about that category of road and, and in the study, how much of our roads fallen under that percentage. Um, so here's just an example of what that looks like with their study, so they have photos from, so poor, you can't really see it, it's not great photos and they're kinda small, but you'll often see the alligator cracking, so we call it alligator, cause it looks like alligator skin, where there's just little kinda squares everywhere that are popping out and, and crack seal can't keep up with that, and so that's, that's in a poor condition. This, um, yeah, we, we, we definitely don't wanna get there. Fair is where you're, you're seeing some of that cracking coming through, a lot of that cracking. But we're not necessarily seeing pothole, potholes everywhere along the road. You'll see them here and there, right? And then fair, kind of a little bit better still within the fair, not as much cracking, good. You'll, you'll have a little bit of cracking, but not much, and then very good, you, you don't see almost any cracking. So just some kind of examples of what we're looking at. So this was two thousand nineteen, our study. Our average network score was a sixty-nine, uh, pretty much seventy, sixty-nine point eight. We did have a lot in the excellent condition, and again, that, that may be because we have a lot of new roads, right? So, um, and then we had a good portion in, in good condition, and then we had some, some on the, the tail end here, fair to, to poor and very poor. So you can see, um, we, like I said, had a lot in a, like, excellent condition. Um, but we also had so, a lot kind of underneath good, and like we're saying, we're trying to maintain this good condition as best we can.
Good or very good? Cause there was a very good.
Yeah, yeah, so we kinda combined good and very good, so right now we're talking from.
You said very good.
Yeah, that's a good point. Sixty-one to eighty-four is what we're calling good and very good. It includes very good. Um, but yeah, so now jumping to last year's study. Um, our, our network PCI actually went up overall to seventy-four. One thing you will notice, our, our roads that were in excellent condition were not as high. It was twenty-two percent now or seventeen percent. But our roads in good condition went up significantly. That was forty-four percent. And uh, and so we moved quite a few roads up to the good condition. Um, fair and, and poor were, were pretty low now, um, on, on our treatments. And so you can kinda see the red ones are the ones that are in that, that poor, very poor condition, so. Gina Road, obviously, not, not paved, Gina's already paved. Gina Road, but uh, you'll see, uh, some of our widening projects have helped us in the very poor, like uh, Harriman Main Street is now all new roads. That took us from a red to a green. Um, there's some other projects that, that have helped us that way, like seventy-three hundred west and uh, and so, yeah, those roads were a rebuild, but we tried to not just rebuild the road for the pavement. Usually we wait until there's a widening project, a utility project, where we're already gonna be digging up the road and co- combine that with, with those projects.
Question, does so, does this take into account approximately a lot of those newer roads that we also did, so our scores shifted in that direction as well?
Yeah, I will say, so nothing in Olympia was counted in this study, so we don't. A lot of the new roads lately have come from Olympia, but this was before that, so. Um, and it's actually not as much as you'd think, because those roads would probably fall into the excellent condition. And we actually have less than last year, yet our average is going up, so. I wouldn't say it's a, it's a huge influence, but I think we always have to be, I remember that, that we're adding a lot of new roads and we won't be doing that for forever, right? And that might artificially bring up our score, but the program that we're developing, we think we can, we can target and, and keep improving and and going kinda for that eighty, eighty-five PCI range that we're, we're shooting for.
I think that like Justin said, I, this is impressive versus the last one. It's great.
Do we, do we know what our median score is?
Um, Justin, do you know?
I don't know. I'd have to look into, I don't know what the median is off the top of my head.
That's pretty impressive. We've changed a lot in four years, in, well, five.
You can also see like traffic flow patterns kinda through that new town, town center where you see the major traffic flow on those bigger roads, collector roads. And then the neighborhood roads are still in really good condition.
And the, the one, we've got that, that's that Freeman subdivision over there where they were poorly built. I mean, they're less than twenty years old and they're red. I think there are examples of the very poor that they put in the front. We're all out of that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's surprising, cause they're pretty new.
One of the, I mean, not cons, but one of the things that did bring our score down a little bit is we added Olympia, which didn't add any of their new roads, but we did add all of what used to be Harriman Highway, now Harriman Main Street, which is in pretty poor shape, so. Um, we are working with the developer to, to figure out, and by developer, we mean Olympia, to figure out how to improve that road. But yeah, we're, we're even taking in old roads and still improving scores.
Well, the county's got money for their county section there, that's what, what they said, so I'm assuming.
Very small though, right?
Yeah.
Just uh, one, one section from that, we're triangle from the opening to.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
So.
And uh, we're, we're working with Ivory as part of Hidden Oaks. They're gonna work on their portion that's kinda right in here, so that little gap will be the county portion that we're working with them to hopefully get that funded as well.
And that's, is this a percentage, is this whole thing percentage off of square footage to keep it consistent, or is it, how do they calculate it?
Yeah, yeah, so that's seventeen percent of the road square footage fall into that excellent condition. Yeah, that's a good, good question, good clarification. Um, so this is kind of the, the life cycle curve of pavement if we do nothing, right? So what is, is crazy and, and some people say, we, asphalt and roads are really only designed to last twenty-five years. But that's if we do no treatments to it. If we just left the road as it is, it'll, it'll die in twenty-five years hypothetically. Um, and that's where our routine maintenance comes in to prevent that from being uh, true, that we keep these roads good for fifty years or, or even beyond that. Um, so you can kinda see the recommended maintenance based on the PCI score. We've kinda talked about that. Once you get under forty, you're really talking about reconstruct rather than some of the, the easier milling overlays or slurry seals, which we wanna stay up in that preventative and maybe into that minor resurfacing with those milling overlays. And as you can imagine, so really, our roads, yes, traffic loading is a big factor to their deterioration, but weathering is really the biggest oxidation from the sun and thermal expansion and contraction are really what impact our roads the most. Um, once we open up cracks, that's when the, the deterioration, this curve starts to get steep, because then it gets down underneath the pavement. And water gets there and then it freezes, it expands and it pops, and that's where we get potholes, right? So.
So, so Bryce, I think sometimes we, we look at the surface, but probably as important to keeping it is that base. Cause I know when we did Heritage, we did an augmented base because the soils were just not, when it was built. It should have lasted, but it was really failing, so the soils weren't as strong to probably frame those, I guess.
Yeah, i- if we're seeing premature roads fail, even though we're treating them with slurry seals and whatnot, then it's likely going to be a base problem that our repair is gonna address that, so. Like Nathan said, we, on Heritage Hill Drive, that road was falling apart prematurely. And we pulverized the asphalt that was there and actually put it into the existing base, so crushed it, put it in, and then put some cement powder, well, hydraulic cement, so a cement slurry into that base to glue it all together and then brought in the new asphalt on top of that, so. We're recycling and reusing the old asphalt and then putting new asphalt on top of it, and that is actually way stronger base than even if it was just brand new base, so.
It's a little bit more expensive, but I think when you have weird soil conditions, sometimes it's the, the easiest way to fix it. Uh, without having to dig down three feet, so I shouldn't still have the problem because three feet down, it's, you have those same issues.
And that might be a good preview, Anthem Park Boulevard is prematurely failing and needs a treatment similar to this. We could mill and overlay it, but that would likely just uh, fail after a few years, so. As a heads up, that's this summer, that, that project is planned, so.
This summer?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's crazy. Do you think there'd be some sort of a warranty on these roads, huh?
Yeah, we're waiting till the sewer project at least gets down to Harriman High, right? And so they're not right there, but. But yeah, it'll, people won't be happy, right? We still have Bangor enclosure, so we'll have to coordinate that and have good notices and everything, so.
How does our pre-treatment for snow and um, like our salt treatments?
Maybe Justin can, can say that a little bit better.
So it has an impact for sure. So yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna see more deterioration, um, and if we were in an area that didn't have salt and those types of things, but um, that's just the nature of it, so I think, you know, putting these seal coats on like we programmed about every six years.
So I think, you know, putting these silks coats on like we programmed about every six years will help keep the surface of the road, you know, a little healthier and keep the oxidization down.
I remember we used to chip seal quite a bit, or at least a seam like that before I was here.
We're doing more slurry seals, so it's a similar, you get aggregate and you get emulsion. It was the same. In a slurry, the aggregate is just mixed into the emulsion and it gets laid down. And on the heavier roads, on the larger roads, we use a larger aggregate. On residential roads, we use a smaller aggregate. Um the chip seal, we had a couple of projects, and I think it's contractor issues lately that we had several of them fail and they had to come back and fix them. And so we went away from chip seals. They're also a lot dirtier.
They're rougher roads, though, obviously.
They're rougher.
We did fifty six one year. It's pretty rough for a while.
And that was one that failed and we had to go back in and fix it. And so we started using a heavier slurry seal on the more arterial roads.
Okay, so kind of what we talked about here, we are trying to keep the roads in this condition area of their life before this steep drop off. Because the the drop off is is pretty accurate for Utah weather. Um we get into that ten and fifteen years, and if we're not doing this repair, routine maintenance to bring the life back up to kind of, again, we're not going all the way up to a hundred, but we're bringing it back up and we're spending one dollar. We can do that six or seven times before it costs the same as doing one of those treatments down at the end of its life. So we're trying to keep the good roads in good condition. That's a priority. Sometimes we get questions on like, hey, you're treating all these good roads, but then you're leaving the bad road for two years. Rosecrest Road, for example. And and that's true. We are taking a priority to keep the good roads good because it, in the end, it's more efficient. Now, that doesn't mean we're not still needing to take care of those roads. But like we said, with a rebuild of a road, we want to make sure that any impacts to the road or utilities are included. So as you know, Rosecrest Road, we've been waiting for a Jordan Valley project to come through and do it in partnership with their project at the same time um to rebuild that road. Because it's a similar case that it, that one's a little bit more, the asphalt is twenty five years old and is just, yeah, getting brittle at this point and and needs some refreshing. But like I said, if if we do need to look at the base in that case as well, so. Um, yeah. And then, so they they project some some numbers uh on budgeting and and how we get there, how we get. So um currently we're at seventy five PCI or seventy four point eight. Um and so they kind of throw out some different scenarios of budget, a fix-all budget. That means get everything up to that very good condition um and and bring it up. That would be fifteen million dollars. So i- it's a little over five years. Um maintain current backlog. So this goes back to those that are under forty. Backlog are those roads that require major reconstruction under forty. That's what that backlog is saying, is that we are at like a two point three, I think, right now. Two point two percent backlog of roads that are in that under forty category. And so if we wanted to maintain that that same number and not let anything slip, we would need about two point nine million a year to to accomplish that. Now, these are all projections. Things change, right? There are national companies, they're using national averages. Things things are different here, so. Um and then the green line is kind of what they project with our current budget that we've got planned. Um and that's in five years, we're trying to get to a PCI average of eighty five for the network. So improving even another ten PCI. Um and now this is kind of confusing because these numbers look like the same numbers with different budget numbers, right? So what they, this is like, it's rounded. So the backlog raises up to like a two point five in our current uh budget. Whereas this doesn't budget all. It's like right at two percent. Um so that's the difference between the blue line or the red dotted line and the green line that they're projecting our current budget. And as you know, uh Nathan's mentioned this, Justin's mentioned this. A few years ago, the council did give a pretty good direction to say, hey, let's invest in our roads. Let's up that that maintenance budget and we're seeing the impacts of that now, that that even the study is saying, hey, you're doing pretty good on your budget. Let's let's keep that that budget going, so.
And is that the average? Because I think we're, I know we're above that now, but we also have painting and all that that comes out. We're about two point eight?
Yeah, so that was, so I think in twenty six, we were at two point eight. The two point eight budget that we have in there right now is because we've rolled money over from the previous years and brought that up. So over the next, over the next three to four years, our budget, our program budget actually goes up to around three million dollars. And that's where we were thinking that we might be able to step that back a little bit based on this study um and not project that high and try and stick somewhere between this green line and this purple dash line. That's probably will be what our target might be. Now, when we do the project, we've held the money off for Rosecrest Road that year in twenty seven, we'll probably jump up to pretty high. But we're, we've held back around seven hundred and fifty thousand or a million dollars in fiscal year twenty six that we can roll into twenty seven to help offset that large budget increase, that large project and still do some silks coats. Um but as we, now that we have this study, we'll reprogram and we might bring that down to where we're not having to spend upwards of three million dollars and maybe get down closer to an average of two million a year potentially.
Which then gives you some money to do trying to address backlog.
Yeah, for sure.
I I will say, I I want to publicly, that I think public works, Justin, Bryce, they, this is amazing. All the cities now, the fact that we're talking, well, it's two, might go to two point five. I'm like, usually it's like twenty percent. So I'm like, when I see two percent, I'm like, wow, we're pretty good. Knowing, talking with some of our, uh some of my peers in the valley, their their PCIs in the fifties and they're trying to figure out how to get to sixty five. We are at seventy four, talking, how can we get it to eighty five? So just to keep that in perspective, it's hard when your road is a forty. We say that the roads are all right, but overall, I think we've invested pretty well and we have a new city. So trying to keep it up is really, really important so that you don't, we don't saddle a council in forty years. Okay, now we've got a backlog at twenty five percent of our roads or in that shape. Trying to set up, because I think we have our neighbors who are struggling with that as they added, you know, they were twenty five years behind them on their growth. And they're now seeing all those roads come up and and they haven't been able to put enough money towards that. So that has, as we talked about, we actually pulled that maintenance number out of the capital plan and just put it in the budget. So it's not part of our commerce, it hasn't been, it certainly could be. Staff's recommendation is to try and keep it aside so you can do this. But uh as Justin said, as we get to a spot, we can maybe free up some of those monies to do those other projects as a city. So that that's part of the the balance that we have to strike here is what's an appropriate PCI number that you can afford and still deal with your backlog. I would, I would hate to, most, what happens a lot of the time, that backlog, you just think of it as a, you're drawing out of your savings account. And and you just haven't put money back in. Those roads are, if you have a backlog, you've now got all this deferred maintenance. You have very little deferred maintenance here comparatively.
Have we, I'm sure we looked at other options rather than just asphalt, like especially fifty six or Rosecrest there. Have we looked at pavement options or what that cost structure looks like, especially for that first?
A little bit, like you'll see in Riverton, there's a few more concrete roads than, and some of the UDOT roads, they they use concrete for high traffic. It does last a little bit longer, but it is um difficult to work with for utilities. So whenever they have to cut it, it's it's a, as you've seen on one thirty fourth, when that smoothie place went in, they hit a line and then they had to close three lanes and. Anyways, so there is some benefit to concrete roads. Um as far as long-term, less maintenance, upfront cost is what uh kind of holds back a lot of cities, including us. So uh Sentinel Rage is an example. We bought, we built asphalt on that and Riverton built concrete. And it was about, from talking to the contractor on both, it was about three times the cost to build the concrete road as the asphalt road. So we could rebuild that road three times and then we're kind of at the same cost as a concrete road. But on the major corridor like I fifteen, Bangor, even a hundred and twenty six south, one thirty fourth, those are some roads that it, you start to talk about that and it starts to be worth it, the investment to not have to go back in there and and do work on those major roads. Um but yeah, that's that's always a discussion, but it's it's major roads that we're looking at using the the concrete pavement instead of the the asphalt. And we really haven't hit those yet, but um but that's always something that that we need to look at and evaluate. Justin or Monty, I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that.
Yeah, the the concrete is just more difficult, like we talked about, to get in. If you have to repair a utility, it it costs more and it's a lot more work.
And it's much bigger delay if you need to repair a utility.
Because then you need to keep that lane closed or that area closed for five to seven days while the concrete cures rather than just one day to get the asphalt back on it. So, I mean, over long term, like Bryce said, those larger roads, probably there might be a benefit. Um but on smaller collector roads, I I don't see it being a benefit.
One of our constituents sent me a fun TikTok video about absorption pavement, pavement where like water would just disperse through it. I'm sure that's not a great idea in these high-traffic areas or if it's even engineered for that.
Yeah, so pervious pavement is what they call it. So there is some some benefit to that. The concern that we've seen with that, and Justin can speak to it too, is that eventually those those pervious uh areas get filled in with silt. And so unless you're somehow maintaining that and washing that out, then it gets clogged and then you're having a a bigger issue than than you were before.
I'm not sure I've seen that on like a a really highly trafficked drive. Seen it in parking lots.
Yes, I was just gonna say that.
From a storm drain, the pervious payments work to help infiltrate that water. But on a major road, I don't know the, I've ever seen it. Our main goal is to keep water out of the base. We're doing everything we can to keep water away from it. And in that, you'd actually be trying to get it down. I'm sure there's a membrane that hits, it's supposed to run off. But uh it just takes one hole and one quick freeze with that and you start to pop this stuff up.
Yeah. Yeah, so sustainable, yes, uh as far as environmentally friendly, sustainable. But as far as maintenance goes and being able to uh estimate the the life of the pavement, I'd say it it it's a big hit on on our roads.
A lot of times you'll see that in areas that don't freeze much. Yeah, we use it in Northern California, but we, we had snow once in eight years.
It has been used in our climate, but like you said, for parking lots and it requires maintenance, right? Yeah. More than just repaving.
I think Taylorsville.
Taylorsville's parking lot.
By the, their uh event center. That is.
Um so now, moving into the future, like we said, we've got some great technology that we've already used with the the pavement study. But there's even new and and better technology coming that we're looking into and evaluating that might even make make our studies more efficient. So um John, I don't know if I can click on, can you play this? There's no sound on the video, but it'll give you an idea of what we're looking at. So these are just mobile radar or LiDAR units that we can just mount on a car. Um instead of having a national firm fly out or drive all the way out, um it can collect all this data. So it can collect the same pavement.
That's cool.
But it also picks up signs and striping and set and can alert us. So it's also an asset management tool that we're looking at. Um and then LiDAR even gets kind of some surfaces for areas, so um.
And you rent this per time or?
Um so right now, what we're looking at, there's a local engineering firm that works with the national that has one of these units. So they get a discounted, we get a discounted rate from them because they already have it and they can they can drive around. And the nice thing is that it's more efficient in cost. So we're looking at, it's, right now, it's not quite half the cost of what we have been doing, but close to. So we can move up those evaluations to, instead of every five years, maybe we do them every three years because at the same cost, but at a higher interval. Um and with additional data. Now, one of the things that they don't do that IMS does, like we were talking about, is that deflection test. This is all surface level data. Um and so we're, we're looking at options. Nothing's finalized. But but it's this added technology that's going to continually help us be better and and more efficient in our pavement preservation program. Um yeah, with that, I'll kick it back to Justin if you have anything.
So I mean, I think we're moving in a good direction. Um like I said, we'll kind of reassess, you know, what our, you know, future budgets look like after we get through this Rosecrest Road project. We might be able to start bringing down some of those overall maintenance costs. Um and we are, like Bryce said, we are focusing on the good roads. But over the last couple of years, like Heritage, Tuscany, we've done some of those forty and below. So we're doing a small percentage of those to try and keep our backlog as low as we can. Doing some of those milling overlays, full-depth reclamation projects and staying up on our silks coats. So over time, I think if we can keep this pro- this process and program going, we'll be able to maintain our PCI that won't put, like Nathan said, councils from forty years from now having to look at, you know, doing twenty, thirty million dollars projects, so.
No, I think I think it's just because you started it so long ago. Just leadership on you and your team, just making sure this got implemented when it need to be. I know I get calls often that, why are they doing that to that new road? Why aren't they coming fixing this? And it and it's good to know, just help them understand just the life cycle of asphalt and things like that. So no, I, we're there and I I'm just so impressed, the difference between the first study even and now. So it's just because you did a good job implementing it early, so big shout out to all of you guys. Great job.
I think it was definitely smart to throw that different line item in there too, static and not, we're not robbing from the general fund.
Good work.
Thank you both.
Love it. Okay, two point four, Transjordan Cities Buy-In Proposal. Back to Trevor.
So let's just get right into it. About.
Are you gonna give them, because if anybody's watching, they may not know what Transjordan is.
Oh, sure. So Transjordan Cities is a group of seven cities that have formed a interlocal agreement to take care of trash. They run a landfill sort of north of here. Um that's about to fill up in twenty thirty two, but they've secured an area down south Utah County to take garbage. And how that relates to Harriman is our current hauler for trash is Wasatch Front Wasting Recycling District, who takes our stuff and dumps it in to the Transjordan landfill to the tune of about twenty thousand tons a year. Um is what comes out of Harriman. Uh about mid-April, I would say, uh Transjordan Cities approached us. I think, I don't know if it was a mutual meeting or how that transpired, but essentially communication was made to, you know, kind of offer us a seat at the table, so to speak, to to offer us membership into this interlocal um with a seat on the board. And so with some back and forth, um these are the terms of the deal that were proposed by them for the council's consideration. Uh so I I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We can go through some of these points and more than anything, just field any questions from you. Um if there's any more information that you need kind of to to make a decision on moving forward, um please let me know and we'll we'll go run that down to the best of our ability. Just one other quick point before getting into to some of this is, this is all kind of in the context of, you know, the an exit, potential exit from uh Wasatch Front Wasting Recycling. We had come to council, I don't know if it was about two or so months ago, earlier this year, to kind of talk through that possibility. And and so um this, this is obviously related to that in that, you know, we would be, this would be one foot out the door, i- in a sense, if we were to um engage with Transjordan, you know, just straight up as a member, as opposed to having Wolford do that for us. Um and then we also, for folks who are watching over you, if you're unaware, have just closed a RFP for solid waste haulers. Um got two proposals back and those are, you know, being evaluated. It's it's a pretty open-ended. It's, it's a pretty open-ended uh evaluation and and kind of negotiation process. And those, those who did submit were aware of that from the outset. And so no timetable there, but these are all kind of the the pieces that come together to contextualize what we're gonna talk about tonight. And just this process more broadly. So I, I mean, if you've got questions, I'm happy to take on if you want.
This is the same, the same deal they worked the last time they added cities, which was in Draper.
Yes.
Essentially, they took the same process. It's twenty years later, so they reworked it to, I mean, it's just that they took an evaluation of their whole system. Did the the division like they did then and it's essentially the same deal.
What about the the four annual cash payments? What do you think? I mean, obviously it's a negotiation, maybe we can negotiate that with them a little bit, cause do we have a hundred thousand dollars for those years?
So we, we, we might negotiate with them. We also, you know, that may be something in the course of the RFP with the with the hauler that that we negotiate with them to figure out. I think it's great to to touch on that because we don't want to necessarily come out of pocket to pay that.
As you say, is there way to, because if the fees look lower, it, they are, yeah, I mean, you could. Could you roll it into that somehow? You could do, maybe there's just a seventy-five cent a month surcharge for the first four years and then it goes away. Right? Because you've met that, the the real.
Still cheaper to the residents, but yet.
Correct. I, and and for the for the residents right now, so for fifteen years, we're anticipating that difference is paying it off. Then then you're a true member, your fees go down. What really is of interest, I think, to me as we talked with them is Transjordan owns these landfills. There could be a point where they say.
Only trans.
In order to keep the lifespan of these going, we're gonna restrict it just to Transjordan members. Right? It goes longer, we don't have, they don't have to let anybody else come. Was that they anticipate the life of that landfill they have down there between eighty to a hundred years. Like, well, if we could get in, you know, secure that, it's multiple generations, aren't gonna have to think about it. We'll at least have that secured in a hundred years, who knows what they're doing with their landfills. But it does give us a, a sense of some security for our residents. Uh, they are going to build a tipping, so when this one closed, they'll build a tipping, so we would go there, but it would be hogged halt. So that was really of interest to me is this longer securing it long term. We, we as a city don't want to be in the, our sole, we would want to be on our own trying to do it. We would like to. Uh, it wasn't, until they called, I didn't know it was an option to join them, but they said, you know, we've been talking, you probably should be a member. So I think they may be talking to some other cities, I don't know, but that's, that's our thought is.
Nathan, didn't they tell us there was another city that they had, they could no longer come there? Bluffdale?
Yes, Bluffdale switched to a different hauler who goes to a different landfill, so their residents have to take their stuff to that landfill.
Yep, and that, we could be in the, you know, same boat, so it'd be, I just think it's smart for us to to move forward with this. You know, obviously there's details to work out, but yeah, the security of it, a hundred percent agree with that.
For the convenience.
Yeah, it's right there. And if there's a transfer station there, it's perfect. You know, you're not, you're not driving down Black Road back there to the other side of Utah Lake, so.
How large will our board get? Do we know that?
Uh, we're, we would be one, they would add a, so if they add another city, every city gets a boat.
Now, a lot of the people on their board are, are staff.
Yeah, it's mostly their s- it's staff.
And I can't imagine they'll have a lot more conversation.
They'll fill it faster if they had a lot more members.
No, true.
I don't see them getting to fifteen, you know? That probably cuts the lifespan of their landfill down.
Yeah, but they're taking other, other cities and other people right now.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah, I can see that in the future not as well.
Yeah, cause at some point, it's like you say, they could just say no. Not coming here. And if they did that right now with Wolford, then I think what the fees would be.
Oh, yeah, cause they're hauling twice as far.
We would have to hauled clear up this this solid landfill, that's a long ways. At what, three to three miles a gallon, four miles a gallon?
And our trash days would get doubled.
Yep. Get the land.
Did you have other slides?
That's it.
Oh, wow. So really, right now, there wouldn't, as I said, in in your, the up to fifteen years, what they told us is that at the end of fifteen years, you haven't retired the debt, they would just forgive us.
We saw that, that was really impressive.
Yeah, with the other cities, most of them paid it off in ten to twelve years. Just with growth and everything. And frankly, I think in their projections, I, I think we're paying off for fifteen years. Uh, so it's a huge risk with that life.
They still do all the same services?
Alright, so this is just the landfill. When we, when we do that, when we talk about the RP, that would be uh, it's different. Um, we'll, we'll talk about what services are offered, what the prices are. Cause we've actually looked, there's a whole lot of surfaces, or services that are used by one to two percent of the the users, who everybody's paying. Have to decide if that's the right way to go.
Yep, I agree with Sherry.
Alright, so we'll be bringing this, we'll reach out to them and and bring it back as a formal uh action, but we'll reach out to them and say, yeah, we are. Cause we finalize that so we can come forward with the way to do it.
Okay.
Love it.
And then, okay, and the RFP we're gonna talk about?
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Is that next?
It is now.
See if you're here, Trevor.
Oh, that's right. Well, one of us will talk about it.
It'll be, it's, it's, it's good data, good information.
That's probably what I was thinking we were doing the next thing. Trying to brush some other deadlines or something. We'll talk.
Okay, thank you, Trevor.
What we'll do then is I'll sit over there and be the. It's Blake.
Trevor Blake. Trevor's gone, so. I was thinking Blake.
Okay, well, that brings to the close of our work meeting. Do we have to close tonight? Anything to close?
We do.
Starting to close then, so all from motion to temporarily recess.
Can we do it in a ten minute? I, I didn't mark more on that, so if we need more on that.
Can we just have the one, just the one?
Yep, yep, great.
Wow, we're gonna. Who's gonna make a motion without Steve?
I'll make a motion to temporary recess, uh, work meeting. Go into closed meeting for the following purposes as provided in Utah State Code in a date of fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. Discussion of character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual.
Okay.
That's my daddy's second, Sherry, Teddy?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
How about yes? Going to close, I think we should see council and Nathan.
Something to do with you.